All right. We can take our seats. We'll call this meeting to order. All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for December the 12th at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we just invite you to this meeting. Father, we invite your Holy Spirit here tonight, Lord. We ask that you would guide us, Lord. We ask that you grant each one of us your wisdom, Father. But we ask that you be with everyone here tonight, Lord. Keep yourselves safe, Father, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, in its courts, whatever it may be.
May be seated. Madam clerk, feel please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, I'll first start off by saying, uh, tonight we've got a couple items. There's obviously a lot of people here, uh, probably gonna be a lot of speakers. We had a public hearing, so all of the, uh, audience members that wish to speak on behalf of this item, uh, will have a three minutes to do so. Uh, we'll start out, and we get to that, uh, item by having them, uh, give their presentation. Then every member will have three minutes to, uh, speak their piece. Then we'll follow up by any questions that we have for, uh, any presenters or anything like that. And having said that, we will get going. All right, under citizens and outside agencies, item number four, we have the art and cultural, uh, fusion fest event. They're asking for a road closure. We have Ms. Galen Thomas here to speak on this. If we have any questions for her. You can see the event request there, um. Looks to be pretty standard issue. Looks like they're gonna be closing, uh, Museum Avenue at Main Street and, uh, just south of the library parking lot. Do we have any questions for them on this? Be for January the 28th, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Looks like a great event.
Seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
We make a motion, we approve item B4 for the art and cult fusion fest event and road closure request.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Up next, we have another event request. This is Fiesta de Reyes, uh, Three Kings event. Uh, this they've done a couple of times before. It's been a fantastic event in the past. Let's look through, do we have any representatives here on this event?
I spoke with Ms. Delisara and she said that she was gonna try to come, but she was coming from Orlando.
Okay. As I said, it's just a repeat of what they've done before. Um, they're basically just asking for the use of the property and even then it's just the drive-through area of the old, uh, bank.
Is that gonna be answered?
I don't see anything, uh, that jumps out at me. Is there any questions from the board?
Mayor, this isn't the old bank. It's the, uh, city parking lot there.
The one with the basketball courts now?
Oh, they changed it over there.
They're moving across the street. Okay.
Yeah, it used to be.
Even better.
Yep.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve B5 for the event request.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. One last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm number six. We have the minutes for November the 14th, city council regular meeting. Be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve C6, the minutes for November 14th, 2022.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, we have the purchase of a new brush truck. We do have Chief Marcy here to speak on this. If we have any questions for him. Do we have anything for him? This obviously is a budgeted item, something we had planned on.
Yep, looked like did plenty of research, so.
You have anything to add, Chief? I'll take that as a no.
Yeah, um, nothing of any, uh, substance to it. It's just a 20-year-old truck that has, you know, been worn out. We're having a hard time getting parts for it, and at this point he's gonna go to auction, it seems like.
Yeah, as I recall, you guys, uh, depend on this truck for some of your daily needs as well. It's not just for brush fires, right?
Yeah, correct. It's really the truck that we do to the majority of our medical calls because it's a little smaller truck, little easier to get in and out than the big fire engine.
Sure.
And just less wear and tear on that big thing.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number C7 for the purchase of a new brush truck.
Do we have a second?
My second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm number eight. We have the approval, purchase of Badger meters. Again, these are meters that we use just about every day, uh, purchasing them in bulk. Any questions on this purchase?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for Rick. Is he here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Um, Rick, um, I, I read the notes that this is, um, the, these orders would be continuously, meaning as needed?
Mm-hmm.
Do we, um, do we have a number that we would need altogether total?
Yes, man, there, there's over a thousand meters that are currently not working and they're dying every day. We're at the end of the expiration date of the current meters that we have in the ground. They're 15 years old. Their warranty ended at 10 years. So they're dying off at a pretty fast rate, and when they die, we have to send the guys back out to get rereads, and then it holds the whole process of the billing process up. A lot, not only is that an issue, but it's taken us four to six months to get an order. So if we don't go ahead and order these now, that's gonna put us, you know, into the following year billing where we can't close the books out like it did this year. So I'm just trying to beat the curve with a long lead time. And the money is budgeted for the meters.
Right. I guess my question is, after we place this order, we're gonna have another order coming after this order and another order or?
No, no, ma'am. This, this, this will probably hold us over till the next year.
To the next year?
Yes, ma'am.
When a meter goes bad? Um, it's pretty much kaput?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it is. It's, you know, it's, if, if you picture, it's a, it's electrical board that's in there, and when it goes bad, the bat, there's batteries in there. When the batteries go bad, they're potted, potted meaning that they pour a, uh, you know, like epoxy resin over it, so you can't change the batteries out. That's the end of the life of the radio and the meter, so they're changed out, uh, replaced with new meters. And generally speaking, you know, you wanna replace your meters every 10 to 10 to 15 years on the older style meters because that was the life of the meters.
And some of them may go out before that?
Yes, ma'am, but when they do go out, the new meters, if I'm not mistaken, they're now 15-year with a five-year prorated where before, uh, they were 10-year with a five-year prorated and they're outside the prorated, so unfortunately we're having to purchase them.
Okay. All right, that's all I, that's all.
And the further that, we're playing catch-up. We got meters out there 20 years plus old, so a lot of it's catch-up, so it will continue.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions on this purchase? Seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number C8 for the purchase of Badger meters.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Next up, we have item number nine. This will be a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 19-2022. It's gonna be a right-of-way vacation.
An ordinance vacating, closing a portion of South Lake Boulevard in the city of Avon Park, Florida, at the request of adjacent owner, Boston Mining Company, providing for an effective date.
All right, we have a representative here from Kimley Horn. Please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Council. Justin Hamm, Kimley Horn, 109 South Kentucky Avenue, Lakeland, Florida.
Yes, sir. Understand you have a presentation for us.
So I do. I've got a presentation. I've also handed out some package just in case, um, the, uh, things don't work out with the presentation, uh, with technology. Sometimes they don't always work out the way you'd like, but, uh, this is, uh, part two of what was discussed last time. So what I ended up doing was taking the presentation that I presented, tacked on some of the items that I like to look at today, some of the things that, that we were discussed at the last meeting. Um, just gonna kinda hit a couple of quick highlights based off this. Here's the aerial of the site that we're discussing, discussing. We got Lake Anoka to the north, Lake Lilia to the south, and then the, the property there and located in between that's bifurcated by this, uh, South Lake Boulevard that, that we're proposing to be vacating. Here's just another aerial of that, or, uh, another diagram of that area. You can see it kind of in relation to some of the other items there. Some of the things that were mentioned at the last, uh, meeting, that there were gonna be direct city taxpayer benefits, that there was gonna be no road maintenance. We're intending to dedicate a 60 by 80 tract for a future lift station, uh, that's been deemed necessary or really needed by the, uh, the utility department and Rick and those guys. So we've worked closely with them on establishing where the best location that would be for the city, and then we've also provided a 20-foot easement over that existing forceman, or we're going to provide a 20-foot easement, so that way that it could still be maintained without having to be relocated, anything like that. Um, other benefits were pedestrian safety and the continual cleanup, uh, that would be a, a burden to the, the city to have to, to take care of. You can actually see that picture on the right is of the actual road out there with the car and the shopping cart and the tire in the background. Uh, so some of the things that, uh, that we looked at last time, and we've got some community support. Uh, we've gotten, um, notices of broken mailbox, reckless driving, ATV, dirt bike racing. I, I just mentioned the, the trash as well. So really wanna get to the, the meat and potatoes of this presentation in these additional follow-up items that we discussed last time, um, the actual burden to the nearby residents. And then at, at you guys' request, wanna take a look at reviewing the, uh, doing a fence along the existing right-of-way to see what that looks like, what that, what that actually means, and then explore some other options. We went, went and looked at some, some other options that were kinda mentioned at the last meeting. So if you look here on this map, this is, uh, after I left here, I know that there was some, some discussion on, um, it being a burden to some of the residents nearby, and, and so I wanted to see for myself and pu, and put actual numbers to that, see what, what is the actual burden here, um, in a worst-case scenario situation. And so if you look there, the red X that's denoted as the, uh, corner was determined as last time, that that was kind of the, the longest route or would be the longest route, the most cumbersome for the residents that are in that adjacent neighborhood. And so I drove, um, to the north from the corner to US 17, along Hal McRae, uh, to the light, and you can see it took me one minute and 50 seconds to get there. And side note that that was behind a slow pizza driver who was looking for the house that they were trying to deliver to. Um, so, so that was actually living a little bit slower, and just to try and really get a good idea, uh, I did the same exercise going from the corner to 17 down the dirt road and drove as fast as I could, at least as fast as my truck would allow me without actually shutting off, cause it beat, beat it, uh, pretty, pretty heavily. Um, and it, that took me two minutes. And then to close the loop, uh, it took an additional 42 seconds to get from Marble Avenue to Hal McRae. So, um, just kinda wanted to, to look at those numbers and see what we're talking about. Depending on what direction you're going, if you're headed north, it's actually 10 seconds quicker to go the paved road to Hal McRae. Uh, and if you're going south, it's about two and a half minutes, uh, versus the two minutes. So you're looking at, at a worst-case scenario differential of 32 seconds is all we're talking about. Not 15 minutes, not 20 minutes, not 30, but talking about 30 seconds. Um, and that doesn't include the fact that at the south end, uh, along the dirt road, you've got the stop sign that doesn't allow for breaks in the traffic like the traffic like those. Um, you've got the additional safety factor of the signal that's there to the north that you don't get at the stop sign, uh, going that direction, and then the, the additional wearing on your vehicle that is, uh, pretty extensive out there right now. So we started looking at, uh, the, the fence along the road that was mentioned last time about what if we did a fence along the road to still allow public access through this area. And so we looked at that and what that would, would create, and as mentioned, it would create, uh, about six crossings with 11 gates that would require, uh, members to use the, the public road for the amenities. So if they're traveling to, to get over to the amenities, they're having to use this road as well. So having to come through a gate, go along down this road, through another gate just to get to the amenity, to the clubhouse, uh, and everything. So, uh, that's one of the things, it requires about 3,500 linear feet of additional wall and fence. Uh, it's about $90,000 worth. It enters the access and views from those within the community. There's, as mentioned, the continued trash debris removal, property damage that the city, you know, taxpayers have to pay for. And then there is the continued maintenance cost if you were to, to leave the road as is, as a dirt road. You have the continued maintenance cost of, you'd have to purchase a grater, which is about $100,000, um, and that was pretty, uh, pretty used from what I, what I looked up and saw. Dozer's about $50,000, and if you were to replace base material about three inches thick, uh, every year, it would be about $50,000 a year of continual maintenance that, that would have to be done on the dirt road. And if you said, well, what if we paved it instead? Uh, you're looking at an initial cost of about $400,000, uh, for that linear footage of road, and you'd have to do asphalt every 15 to 20 years or less, depending on the wear, which is about $200,000 to mill and resurface, um, every time, not to mention the additional potholes and, and that kind of maintenance, um, there as well. And then kinda one of the bigger items is that we would lose, uh, 18, 18 units, uh, through this development, which would cost, uh, redesign, lost time, additional costs. And as you know, the way that these work, there's, there's contracts between the owner and the developer that they have to get their permits and those kind of things within a certain amount of time, otherwise the contract goes void. So, um, all in all, with this redesign, the loss of units, all those kind of things, this project would likely die, and, and we would not be able to see this come to fruition. So we said, well, that, that's not the best scenario there, and, and we definitely don't want that. So what, what about other options? I know we kinda talked about some other options, that there's a, another right-of-way that, that's there through the Duke easement. So he said, okay, let's look at that, and you can kinda see there highlighted on the screen, the location of that, and, uh, Duke has so kindly put all of their poles right along that right-of-way, uh, like they tend to do. Um, so whenever we were looking at it, it would cause us to have to relocate nine transmission poles, and these aren't the typical service little 20-foot poles. These are, are large poles, and I've got an image down there for reference, so you can kinda see the, the ones on the right are the ones that I'm referring to that I'm, as nine transmission, but regular transmission poles, um, that are throughout there, and then because of their requirements of having to be so far away from any of the structures, we would have to actually relocate one large transmission pole, which is the one there on the left, if Duke even allowed that. Uh, right now, I can tell you, as a matter of fact, cause I've done a couple of projects with Duke lately, they're about nine months in just review time of projects, um, not including the actual work that they would have to then complete, all the other, other permitting and things like that, all the changes, the impacts to the residents, the notices, all that kinda stuff. So all in all, uh, again, you have kinda the same situation where you have a full, a redesign to add this road, to make those changes, the permitting time, uh, loss of time, the heavy, heavy additional cost, because all this would be coming at the, at the cost to the developer, um, to move those poles and do that. And again, you'd likely have the same results in, in no project, um, and zero units for the, the residents. So I just wanna highlight a couple of key takeaways. I wanted to kinda keep it brief and just go over some of those things, but, uh, really the burden that we're looking at here to qual, uh, quantify it is 30 seconds of additional drive time, um, and, and obviously not, not as safe of a route. Uh, we have, if you keep the existing road as is, or if you pave it, you're looking at major safety concerns, additional city costs, redesign, increased cost for del, developer, loss in time and units resulting in no project. Um, the alternative, such as the other location, see, again, safety concerns, city costs, redesign, significant cost to the developer, loss in time and units, no project. And so, um, no project means that there's new city maintenance, no dedicated lift station tract to meet the current needs, no community improvements, no additional housing in an area that the city, you know, in a city that desperately needs this, this type of, uh, community. So I would just ask that you, um, would really consider vacating this right-of-way as we, we proposed and, and requested. Can I hear for any questions, ma'am?
Uh, it's just worth saying, the, um, there was a report that was prepared by finance director, Melody. Apparently, uh, it was asked by the council or, or a council member, um, what the actual revenue would be for this project, uh, to the city. So water tapping fees, uh, would be $146,000, uh, water capacity fees would be $318,000, wastewater tapping fees, $105,000, wastewater capacity fees, $406,000. So the total tapping and capacity fees that this project would be paying to the city is $976,000, thereabouts. Uh, the annual revenue in water, wastewater and garbage, uh, $277,000. The add valorum is roughly 141, almost 142,000. Fire assessment 45 for a grand total of annual revenue to the city of $464,000, give or take. Having said that, this is a public hearing, so if there's not any pressing questions, uh, for the presenter, we will have the public hearing. Let everyone that wishes to speak do so. It's already been read into the record. So the, uh, public hearing for ordinance number 19-2022 is now open. Uh, anyone wishing to speak can now do so. We did have one sign up, so we will start with him first, Mr. Arnold Wilson. Okay. Mister? Okay. Mister Wilson? Okay, you'll just have to make your way up to the podium here. Yeah, Mr. Arnold Wilson is at 1412 South Carolina Avenue?
Yes.
All right. So when you're ready, if you will, uh, speak in the microphone, and remember all comments are addressed to me. And you will have three minutes to speak your piece.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of the Lacy Hill Weed and Seed Action Committee. We met with the Hollins County Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Vision about a year and a half ago, and with that being said, there was a vision that was given to the.
Mister Wilson, I, one, one point of order. Is this about the, uh, the road?
This is exactly about the road closure, yes.
All right, just wanna make sure.
There's a, there's an action, my, uh, action items that we, uh, is a, is an area, Lacy Hill.
Okay.
We felt that, uh, we needed a comprehensive road study. There's some roads, uh, in Lacy Hill that you can't even pass with two cars. There are no parks. There are no proper sidewalks and lighting, and trust me, we respect the fact that, um, in 1954, uh, two railcars wa, was put on barrels and moved and set on that lake they called the Gator Lake, which is Lake Glinda. And during that time, my father coming out of the service, uh, fighting in the Korean War, he was able to ascertain and get the understanding of what the double-up flip was. And, uh, at this time, uh, the establishment was a joint. And Hollins County being as progressive as we were at one time, Plant City, Avon Park, and Fort Pierce, because we lived off the land. If you lived in Avon Park, if you didn't have a state job, you lived off the land. So therefore, when it heated up here, our residents would travel north. But my father understood that, and he came home and he started his own construction company. He went to Mr. Kira Peterson and asked Mr. Kira Peterson if you could show him how to lay blocks. He would volunteer. And with that mindset, he was able to create one of the most uh, prominent legacy nightclubs in central Florida. This property was, like I say, railcars, and those groves, God bless you that you have a beautiful plan. Mr. Howard Godwin's father owned those groves, and I can remember as a young child, my brother Eric and I, we would see Howard going over to work on those groves, and it became so awesome the night that Lance Carter performed in the beachfront singing that song, "I'm Stoking." Mr. Godwin thought it was enough to bring him in at 13, and he spoke this thing where that my dad's funeral a few months ago, and what that he said, the value of that land, that accessory, 80 years, next to the beachfront, there is a boat ramp in Hollins County in 1960 that was our black beach.
Mister Wilson?
We had lifeguards there. We also had.
Mister Wilson, excuse me, you, you've gone over your time.
Oh.
Quite a bit, so.
Well, if you had as much to talk about as I did.
Okay.
But this is the Robert.
All right, Mister Wilson, miss, I understand you. Any comments that you might have to be in the microphone, and you've already gone over your time.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Sir, an extra 30 seconds.
At the end of the meeting, you can speak.
His vision with the property.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to another sign up, uh, we don't have any more actual forms that were turned in, so anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this project can now do so. I see one hand. Mister Henson, I think you know how to do this by now.
Al Henson. 903 South Pine on Avenue.
Yes, sir.
The street you're speaking of is a historical street, been used by Lacy Hill for 60 or more years. I'd like to ask you a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Has Avon Park always owned that street?
No, we, we just own this, we just came to own this road roughly one to two months ago. It was previously in the county.
How did that come about?
So we annexed the, that Boston mining property, um, probably, I don't know, none of the exact, it was somewhere between five and eight years ago in that neck of the woods, and, uh, at that point, we should have basically taken that road into the city, but we didn't, so it was just something that was overlooked. Whenever this project came about, obviously looking through all of the water mains and et cetera, et cetera, um, the county finally realized that they shouldn't own that road, that it was, should be in the city now that we had annexed all that property. So thus began the process, which was a long process, and, uh, eventually we came to now own it.
The thing is, that has been a historical road for Lacy Hills for years.
Okay.
More than 60 years. They've traveled that road. They still travel that road. They walk that road. Uh, whoever owned that road should have paved it years ago. Should have been, uh, sidewalks going down there. People walked that road. People run that road. We build back routes all over the city. It should have been back routes on that road. That was the only exit to 26, 27 from Lacy Hill. One of the closest routes, north and south. But when you close that for, uh, progress, you call it, then you take away from the citizens that's been using that forever. And I truly believe that if that neighborhood was a white neighborhood, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's just that we go in, and, and money involved, but none of these people that live in that, and I don't live in the area, but I have family that live in. But I have family that live in the area. I have people, friends that live in the area. That road should have been named after some of the old people that lived and made that area possible. But now you come up and because some money coming in, is it going to them? No. And I still say, if that was a white neighborhood, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? Don't all jump at once. Okay. No, sir, you've gone over your time. There, there was a hand in the back. Please give your name and address for the record when you get up there.
My name is Annette Jones. I live at three zero six four Cali Upwe Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, did, uh, I understand from the last meeting, I questioned in reference to uh affordable housing. And I just want to know, did they, have anybody ever addressed what is considered affordable house besides a fair market value? I know a lot of developer, when they come in, they build something, they have an idea what would be considered as affordable housing. I'm just really concerned about that.
Yep. So at this point in time, um, obviously the, the statement that's coming from the the engineer, uh, and he may want to address it after uh, the public hearings is done. And basically it was whatever the market value was at the time. As far as uh government programs of to be affordable housing, I haven't seen any, but again, they can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, I would like for them to, since they did a lot of research. I was wondering if they researched what would be the affordable housing for individuals for that area.
Wait, we, we can't answer that. We're not the developer.
Well, can, can he, can it be addressed?
If, if he chooses to do so after the public hearing is done.
Okay.
Mister Henson, you, you've already had your time. That was, that, that, that was your choice, Mister Henson. You know the rules. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Mister Davis, please give your name and address for the record.
Arnold Davis, twelve fourteen South Carolina Avenue.
Yes.
Avon Park. Uh, as I travel the road, okay, you got two sides. Will it be houses on the south side of the road?
Yeah. There's houses on both sides.
On both sides of the road?
Right.
So that's gonna take up the lake and all that, huh?
Yeah. Yep, so the.
So a, a, and the way we talk, we talk like our minds are already made up and we just waste another breath coming up here.
Well, we have an engineered plan here. So you ask questions about the engineered plan, I can show it to you.
No, I, I, I didn't. I'm just saying about the minds made up, so am I wasting my best and time by coming up here trying to speak on that road?
You're exercising your right as a citizen of Avon Park to speak.
And, and as a citizen, we put you in office, but you still don't do the citizens' wishes.
We do what's best.
Take the engineer over, uh, uh, the citizens don't think that's best.
Well, we're put here to do what's best for the majority of the citizens of Avon Park, not for a particular person or a particular family or anything like that.
Can I address Ms. Bernice?
Uh, you, you can address whichever you wish.
Okay, okay, well, Ms. Bernice, then you have a, a list of peop- that people sign?
Yes, sir.
Over how many signatures? Well, how many signatures?
Five hundred.
I'm finished.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say that we're gonna need that list for the, in the agenda packet when this is done, so.
Yeah. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Says a public hearing for ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two. If there's no one else wishing to speak, public hearing for the ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Take it back to the council. Does council have any questions for the presenter?
I'd like to ask Justin just a couple of questions, please.
And obviously you'll have an opportunity to share anything else that you wish.
This won't take much, but uh, I think one of the misunderstandings here is exactly what this development is about. My understanding is going to be three hundred and twenty-five rental homes.
Yes.
And they're all going to be three bedroom, two bath homes.
I'm not sure the distribution, but I know that there are, most of them are going to be three, two, yes.
So, so this product, this development is going to bring not only a lot of people, but a lot of children, a lot of kids. A lot of people is going to bring jobs, they're going to bring businesses with them. And uh, the fact that this road, the location is, I think for me, the number one concern always is safety. And if we have a lot of children that lives in that community and have a, a road that ends up being paved like that, if it would be, I'd be very concerned having uh, that many groups of family members. I mean, you could have as many as a thousand people live there with, you know, two kids or more in house. But uh, these people will have affordable rental housing. They'll be able to bring jobs to the city of Avon Park. They'll be able to uh, purchase products at our businesses, uh, and they'll shop there and uh, they may even get jobs there. And they also may even bring new businesses to Avon Park. So I think for the development of uh, of the new citizens of Avon Park that would come here for this development, I think would be a great opportunity for them to have a, what I would call affordable rental housing. And that uh, overall, I think that financially it's going to be a, a, a plus for the city.
And for those that are already here that could utilize something like this as well.
Okay.
And now, now I think you did a good job in the presentation this time.
Thank you. All right, anything else in the council?
Yes, I would like to address him. Um, the last time you was here, which was our last meeting. Um, I'm under the impression that the council advised you to go back and try to get an alternate plan. But don't look like you went to get an alternate plan. It looked like to me, you brought back to us the things that would be too difficult for you to figure it out. But by my understanding, I thought this council asked you to, because we wasn't in agreement with the closing of the easement and we advised you to go back and get an alternate plan. Here's what, here's what I'm concerned about. I'm not exactly sure who the young lady and the man was when they first came to us. When um, the county transferred the easement back to us. One of the things on record that they spoke of is that if they couldn't get that easement closed, that they wasn't gonna build. It was like it was a threat from the beginning. And you would have thought that you would have came to the city first to try to get the road closed before you went to building and doing anything out there. But I remember when the couple clearly stated that if they could not get it closed, that they wasn't gonna build. And I saw it as a threat from day one. It's like you was threatening the city. We don't get what we want, you don't get what you want. Of course, housing would be great for the city. We need housing. But I think the, 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 the resident of Avon Park has spoken. I think that they have said, well, I don't think, I know they have said, they don't want the road closed. And last time we met, we told you to come back with an alternate plan. And you got before us, you presented all of this and what a big problem it would be, but you still didn't come up with an alternate plan.
Okay. Jared, you have something?
Uh, just briefly, I, um, a peripheral matter, just with regard to the lift station property is something that uh, we mentioned to them um, that we would need in the future, um, because that area, it's going to be a major lift station, but it wasn't something that we, we said that there was a, a requirement for them to get this closed. Um, but apparently, um, you know, they generously offered to, to provide that for free. And I just will point out that if we had to purchase that, it would, it, it would, um, it would have cost us, you know, a lot of money, so.
Yeah.
For, for a list station that we have to have out there. Not related to this project.
Yep. Well, I mean, I think it's very clear in this past election, um, you know, I heard from quite a lot of residents as, as we were walking around knocking on doors. And people very much like the growth uh, message um, that I've been pushing for years. Um, it was very clear that they wanted to continue uh, to grow Avon Park. And the thing about a town is if you're not moving forward, you are backing up. Um, you know, it's just like your walk with God, you cannot stay put. You're either going forward or you're going backwards. So i- it's going to be very important for this town to keep moving forward, otherwise we very much run the risk of dying as a town. So I think that we should remain open. That's why we've gone through such great links to try to open up some of our zonings to attract things just like this. Uh, this would be the largest development that we've had in my lifetime uh, in Avon Park. Uh, hopefully we have more just like it. You know, this is exactly what we should be doing. We've heard every single uh, housing study that comes out of the county, comes out of the state and comes out of the feds, that we need more housing in Avon Park. So you can't find housing anywhere. Everything's very expensive. This is how you solve those issues. So if you want your kids to have a place to live, if you want your family members to come back to Avon Park, you have to build more housing. It's very simple. So the fact that this firm uh, has come forward and they want to build, like I said, the largest development that we've had in over thirty years, I commend them. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to see it. So I'm glad that we got this request and uh, I, I hope that we can move forward. Did you have anything to add, just?
No, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council? No, we don't. You've had your time to speak, sir. That, that'll be enough, sir. All right, so do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two.
Now, I would just stipulate that um, and, and if we were, if we, if you do approve it, and I'm not saying you are, you aren't. If you do approve it, you know, we have to have this as a form of closing so that we get the easement um, before the um, um, the ordinance is concluded, closing the, closing the roadway. Um, it's just, um, and uh, at the same time, so that we don't have a, um, a problem with property rights, so.
Okay, now would that be handled by your firm or what?
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be handled by the firm.
Do you need a um, add-on to that motion to give you leeway to do that or is that just automatic?
Yeah, I, I would need to add on to the motion.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two on the second reading and also grant uh, Mister Jerry Bureau, City Attorney, uh, the right to continue with the closing. Is there a second?
I'll second it, please.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Last opportunity for questions. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item number ten, we have the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two. Excuse me, twenty dash twenty-two. This would be clarifying the master water, water wastewater billing.
This is an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing recitals as to the council intent, amending the city code section ninety-eight dash two thirty-eight by adding provisions for master wastewater meters for some forms of use and providing for wastewater billing and to be based on such what wastewater meter rather than on water meters. Providing for initial rates for master wastewater meters, providing for codification and repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Jared, do you want to brief us on what exactly this is?
Yeah, we um, we don't have a provision with regard to master meters. It is a pretty, very, very common uh, practice to have uh, for large subdivisions or closed subdivisions. Where they have private streets and so on, to have a master wastewater um, uh, lift station and a master meter. Uh, after that, when you, you build based on the meter, and the reason for that is infiltration and inflow most of the time. Uh, in this case, we, we also need it because um, it was a requirement of the Nucor agreement and, and the Nucor agreement. Um, they, they have um, you know, we have a, a administrative building. So the first phase of that, we had um, administrative building. They received water and they had sewer from the building coming out based on that water. And that was fine, but now that they have industrial wastewater, they use wells on site to provide their water for the wastewater uses. That's not registered and that needs to be um, registered and paid for. And fortunately, it is registered because they do have, because our contract required it, they do have a wastewater meter out there. We just need to utilize that for billing purposes. And I, I believe we have the authority to do so, but we, they want us to make it crystal clear, so that's what we're doing.
Okay, so I'm assuming uh, that you've reached out to Nucor at this point and everyone is.
Yes, the Nucor is.
Yep, okay. All right, anything to add? Staff, have anything to add here? Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And so this is a first reading, uh, so the next, we, we will require two readings. The next one will be a public hearing. So if there's no questions from council or anyone in the audience, um, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire? Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have an estimate as to how much revenue was being missed?
Uh, right now, the wastewater is coming in around seven thousand dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure how much. We'd have to um, read the wastewater meter and figure out, you know, where the difference is.
Okay, so we simply weren't reading the meter every month?
Correct.
It was prorated, okay.
It was based on a report that Nucor gives us.
Okay.
And, and this wasn't the agreement that they would do this and, and so we have the statute limitations by which to go back and, and um, um, back bill for that. And they've already taught, said that they would be good for it, so, okay. I don't, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire? Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did I call the roll twice on that?
Yes.
Yes.
He didn't. I rolled with it.
We're just doubly sure. I appreciate you. All right, item number eleven, we have the proposal for the lease of the city property and to build a monopole tower. Mark?
Uh, Mister Hahn is here. He got with us a few months ago, looking at this location. We gave him some ideas on other ones. He looked around on and he got back, says his client says this is the best location. And um, I got with CFRPC on it and we thought it'd be best they present in front of council, see if you'd like to move forward because it's going to take a small zoning change. And I spoke to Jerry just thirty seconds or sixty seconds on it and he's familiar with these type things, so Mister Hahn, it's all yours.
Yes, uh, my name is Patton Hahn, address is four twenty twentieth Street, North Birmingham, Alabama.
Okay.
And um, if you go to the third slide, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about kind of how we got here. We've been talking, we, we initially reached out to Mister Lavelle in your building department. He put us in touch with the Regional Planning Commission. We've been in discussions with them for several months about the best way to do this and the best place to do it. The way care, tower companies, I represent a company called City Switch. The way tower companies work is that wireless carriers like AT&T or Verizon identify areas where they need improved coverage. And the issue of what's called a search ring. The blue area in this map is the search ring that in this case AT&T gave City Switch. And they said, we need a tower somewhere in that area to improve our coverage. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, I'll come back to this one. This is AT&T's current coverage on the left-hand side. And that yellow um, symbol in there is where the general area where we're trying to put a tower.
I see.
That yellow coverage generally indicates that you'll have acceptable outdoor coverage. You'll have very limited indoor coverage. The green, you can see to the north and south where AT&T actually already has antennas. They have much better in- indoor coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Most people, if you're like my children, use their phones twenty-four seven. Whether they're inside or outside, they want coverage. I did note, when I got here, I dropped a call in the parking lot. That's, that's anecdotal. I'm not asking that.
Okay.
If you go back one slide. My client, City Switch, has an agreement with CSX that allows it to uh, put towers on CSX equipment. In some cases, we put them in rights of way. In this case, our original proposal was that green dot, that's actually a city, a CSX rail yard, I believe, is what that property is used for.
Mm-hmm.
We talked with your Regional Planning Commission Council about putting it in the right of way, putting it on that rail yard. They were not pleased with that. It would put it too close to the residential areas to the east of there. It would run afoul of the zoning, of your zoning regulations. We always want to work with um, you know, people like your planning commission to have their support for our project. What we, we identified, we looked north of there, we looked south of there. As you can tell, there's a lot of residential areas that it's going to be a real challenge to put a, a cover, a, a tower there. But the carriers need the coverage. We need to improve your wireless coverage, and as more people use it, that your dead zones are going to continue to grow and grow. What we talked about with Mr. Schrader, if you go to the fourth slide. One more. Yes. We had originally approached um, what we've, what we've talked about with Mr. Schrader, Mr. Lavelle, and, and what we're coming to talk to you about. We're not asking you to approve anything tonight. We don't have a lease, we don't have zoning approval, we're just simply asking for permission to explore those. Is to put it beyond, I think this was, we originally thought it was the sheriff's station. I drove out there, it's a, it's a governmental building. Is to put it north of there in the existing tree line so that it's as shielded from view as possible. There is currently already an existing, I don't know if it's a sheriff's antenna or what exactly it is. But that's what we're proposing. If you could go to the two more slides. It would have coverage, it would have space for four different wireless carriers. It would be a ninety-five foot tall tower. Um, my client has commitments already from AT&T and Dish Network to improve it. And from what I can tell from anecdotally, it sounds like there's a need for improved Verizon coverage in this area. So we're hopeful of getting all four of the major wireless carriers. And go to the last. And what, and I believe you should all have this in your packets, but this is a photo simulation of what we think it would generally reveal. But again, we would work on the details of the project. If it's something you're all interested in, we'd work very closely with your planning commission to make sure that it's correct. Or acceptable to you.
Yeah, I guess my question would just be to Jerry, uh, does he see any issue with this?
No, I mean, it's um, requires rezoning, which is not a problem. Uh, these agreements is a variety of different ways you can deal with it. You can um, uh, you have to get some type of remuneration on the property. That's a constitutional issue. Um, and um, so that's fair market value, so it's required. Don't know what that is, but we can find out. Um, generally speaking, there's um, add-ons with regard to the other carriers with rent they're making. You know, there's um, a portion of that that you can get. And yeah, I mean, all these things are in combination or, you know, uh, or whatever, but the, also um, I know some cities get um, their cellular service for free for their use in the, for the, the city itself. Their city employees using the cells for city purposes. That's another thing that they do. Obviously, you can't do that outside the city. Um, because um, then it's an ethics issue, so. But um, that's what some cities have done. And I've done a number of these agreements. Usually it's involving the um, the um, use of wa- uh, water tanks, water towers for that, but then uh, Salsa Springs has a monopole. And uh, I represent them. But it's just a matter of finding out what fair market value is and what the deal is. You know, I mean, it's a negotiation like anything else.
Any other questions? What's it worth to them compared to what's it worth to you? Okay.
I just had one question real quick. I mean, first a comment about Verizon. I, I can tell you, just in the last few months, I've had several dozen people comment to me about the lack of a proper service, mainly from Verizon, mainly towards uh, near Main Street and US twenty-seven. Is this tower going to support uh, giving an extra service for all the carriers that get on there to that corner of Main Street and twenty-seven?
Afraid I can't identify twenty-seven on my map, but it would around Main Street. I'm not sure the proximity of the looking at that area. Is that?
I know, it's hard for me to say.
Yeah. Exactly.
So it should.
Okay. Would the circle be as large as the other two green circles, I guess is probably a better question.
That's a good one.
I don't want to warrant that. I, I, I don't want to predict what their Verizon's coverage would look like on that.
Understood.
So let me ask it this way. Do you know how many miles that the signal will pick up in the city?
It would, the main goal of it is to improve it around the downtown area there. That's the main goal.
To connect the two green dots, two green circles?
Yes. That's what AT&T's coverage goal is for that. It wireless coverage is a, is a function of height and interference. And the lower, this is a relatively small tower, ninety-five feet tall. And it's designed to be small to not I don't think if I was proposing a two hundred and fifty-foot tower in the center of your downtown, you would be receptive to it.
Right. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor. So let me make sure I understand this right. We're gonna put a tower in this area for Main Street businesses and the residents?
Yes, ma'am.
To better their signal?
Yes, ma'am.
But not the rest of Avon Park?
If we built a larger tower, it would improve a larger area. But I don't think that under your zoning laws, and after talking to your planning commission, that I don't think y'all would be amenable to a larger tower in your downtown area. That would be visible from a much greater distance.
But this would be the only, I'm sorry, this would be the only tower though, right? In the city? That they're looking at at this time?
This is the only tower that my client is, is seeking to build in your city limits at this time.
Okay.
I'm certain that sooner or later, there will be other carriers and other tower companies that seek to build towers east and west of that proposed location.
Yeah, just for reference, if, if the two green circles were connected, then you would have coverage that goes well beyond Twin Lakes. Um, which is, you know, River Greens all the way down past. I mean, you can, you can actually make out Lake Tulane, which is already covered. But it would connect basically that entire area.
Roll it up, yeah.
Yeah. So that, I'm sure that's their goal. Now, whether or not it does it in every single pocket, it's probably a different story. I know I always seem to find the pocket that doesn't have service, so. Sure, other people will too. But anyway, uh, I mean, ultimately, it's a good thing. I'm, I'm glad that uh, service providers are, are trying this sort of thing. Um, as the gentleman has said, you know, the tower is not uh, obscenely tall. I don't think it's going to create some sort of a massive eyesore. Those trees in that area are probably every bit of fifty to sixty feet tall already. And you're only talking about ninety-five feet, so you'll see a tiny little needle, if you know right where to look, going above those trees.
And it's shorter than the existing, uh, I believe that's a sheriff's communication.
It is. My, my question would be more to what does the actual lease look like? And obviously, we won't have that language until everything is negotiated.
We didn't want to, we didn't want to go down that road if it was something y'all were interested in, and so that's all we've come to do.
It would sway in your direction on that. Okay. You had a question?
I, I do. The, the tower's not going to have any kind of interference with the sheriff's department tower, will it?
Absolutely not. We can't, we can't get a license to.
Got you. Okay, and how far from their building, and, and you may not know this, I don't, I don't see if I see it on here, but from the building to the tower is how, how far?
Um.
If I'm reading that right, does that say, well, I don't know.
It looks like.
If you look at this, this slide. Don't have the scale on it. Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say that the exact location of it isn't certain. This is our preferred location. And we would certainly work with, you know, the planning department, building department, say, this is exactly where it needs to be, so that you don't have to remove unnecessary trees so that we can get the access correct, that kind of thing.
And, and I have one more question too, and I don't, I don't know if I'm speaking to the wrong carrier's client right now, but I've seen, I've seen these towers that are constructed to look like tall trees. Have you seen that?
Mm-hmm, many times.
Would that be something that they could do also to maybe take away the whole tower look?
I'll, I'll say, I'll say two things on it. I get asked that. I've been asked that a lot. Most of the towers that are designed to look like trees end up being much more conspicuous than the monopole tower. And I'm happy to get your email and show you those kind of things. I've, I've represented clients that have had to take the arms off them to make them look less conspicuous. Second, five G technology really um, it's really hard to put the kind of antennas you need for five G antenna on these kind of stealth towers. It limits the number of antenna you can put on a tower. So then I'm happy to explore that, though, as we move through the zoning process, but.
That's their goal is the five G?
Yeah.
That they're shooting for, okay.
Okay, can I ask, um, how many of these poles have you put up in the last five years, your company?
City Switch?
Yeah.
I'm a lawyer.
Okay.
But City Switch, Street Switch has put up I, I can't even, over a hundred monopoles for sure.
Over a hundred?
Yeah, and almost every single design, I represent all the wireless carriers as well for their independent tower builds and other tower companies. Almost every single one we put up now has a monopole.
This, this company, uh, how many do you think they put up in a year? The reason I'm asking really, I just get to the point is that, you know, I think we need some references from in Florida, uh, monopoles that, that have been put up by this company in the past. And I just don't, I don't want to ask, I don't want to ask for a thousand. I want a reasonable number.
Yeah, what I can do is certainly as we move through this process, I can get some copy, some, some references of city, other city switch sites in Florida.
I might prefer to have a period of time as, as um, rather than the ones that your client picks out. So, I mean, whatever.
I'll be happy to find, to get you a list of ones we've done in Florida within a year calendar.
Great, thanks. Incorporated information for the lease, obviously.
Absolutely.
So as far as moving forward through the process, uh, we'd be looking for permission for Jerry to start the negotiation and for our planning staff to start the process of the rezoning. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I, I saw a move, a motion move forward.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Yes, sir.
My name's Barry Foster. I do not live in Avon Park, but I am a member of the Greater Avon Park area.
Understood.
Um, I would like to tell you that Verizon service in the Greater Avon Park area is awful. Uh, I've asked Verizon about that, and they said, well, we're waiting for five G towers to be constructed. Uh, my wife, who is a self-described nutty person, tells me that anybody who knows anything should check the health effects of five G broadcasting in areas where there is dense population. So, because she's my wife, I'm passing that along to you. Uh, I'm, where we are, there's some towers, they're not five G. We would not look forward to having a five G tower near where we are. So you may want to um, do some extracurricular research on five G. It's still new technology. So there's no long-term effects, because there hasn't been long-term. But I would suggest that five G technology is something you might want to look at. Thank you.
You're good.
I heard that as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Just, just so I get this right, we're just, this is just to move forward with the um, information?
Right, you'll, you'll be looking at a lease it before anything's approved.
It'll have to be rezoned as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes, then.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number twelve, we have an appointment of Donna Parks to the Avon Park Police Pension Board. Chrissy?
Yes, sir. So um, I received this application December fifth from Brian Robinson, who's the plan administrator.
Okay.
Um, all the references that I received from Ms. Parks were pretty much almost verbatim and, and along the side of that she would be great, an asset. Um, that she has done a lot of work for Hardy County in terms of their boards, and uh, she comes highly recommended.
I'm assuming Ms. Parks is not here tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Chrissy about uh, Ms. Parks or the position?
Was this a position that was run like the others and advertised like the others were?
We just had the one Avon Park opening.
When, when did it become open, I guess, is the question?
Well, I would have to say that it's been open since that October, I would have to say.
I think it opened up when Munisami moved over to the fire.
Okay.
And that was sometime around. A while, and it's been on, yes, shown as open.
So it's been shown on the website and everything?
Yes, and hanging downstairs in City Hall.
Okay.
And posted on Facebook as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, um, Ms. Christie, did you get the opportunity to talk to Ms. Parks?
I have not.
You have not? What about you, um, Mark?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Is anybody sitting up here know Ms. Parks? Okay. We don't, if you want more time to research, you don't have to go forward tonight. You can do whatever you wish, so.
Actually, wasn't it Brian Robinson who recommended her to you?
Yes, he's the one who sent it to me.
Okay, so if anybody knows Brian, obviously you can reach out to him or any of the um, people who uh, have recommended her on the list. Do we have contact information for any of the references?
Yes, sir. There, it's listed on the application.
Okay, so you have contact information, or you can reach out to Brian. Um, does everyone feel comfortable to move forward, or do you want to push this off and save it for another time?
I'd be willing to move forward.
I'd be willing to hold off on it. And the only reason why I'm saying it, Mayor, is she comes to the table with a lot of references and, young man you just spoke of, I don't know them. I don't know him either. As I read her, you know, the report that they gave us. She's just coming here from another town. We don't know nothing about it. We're just recommending somebody that we, I think we should at least speak to her, at least hear what she got to say.
I think so.
Why she, why she, why she here? Why she in Avon Park? What brought it to Avon Park?
Sure.
Why she's interested in sitting on our police pension board?
Point of clarification, earlier I said Avon Park Housing Authority. That is not what this position is for. It's for the police pension board. I just have that on my mind, because.
That's how I read it to the opening line.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
Okay. All right, so uh, we've got, uh, sounds like two people want to hold it off, one that'd like to go forward now. Does anyone want to make a motion either to table or to move forward?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Hey, is there a second for that?
Instead, instead, can you uh, make that a motion to postpone indefinitely?
I'll post, I'll make the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Do you still wish to second?
I still second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions?
I'd just like to make one comment, so that everybody knows that when, when they go on the the police and the fire pension boards, that they're, they have a fiduciary responsibility to the pension. And that's the sole responsibility they have, which means that they have to do all their answers and all their teaching and classes has to be make sure that they turn around and keep the pension plan safe and secure for the members that are, are retired or those that are going to retire. So they're basically obligated by law to do one job only, and that's to do the positive best benefit to the pension plan. And uh, if the, one of the officers is on the, I believe he's actually the secretary or whatever, the pension board, but uh, he also is an officer here. If he recommends them, then I'm, I'm good with that, but I have no problem with it being tabled to another date either.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire? Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
This is a motion to table. It's postponed.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This will be brought back up at our first meeting in January. Everyone had better have an answer by then.
Mayor, can I add something?
Yes.
My recommendation is from tonight, I, I think that everybody that puts in for a board, you want them here to talk to them, so we don't go through this again.
That would be wonderful.
And for everybody, Brian Robinson retired here with about twenty-five years. Is a um, I think he was the last officer to retire from here, actually.
Yep.
And now he's been working for several years at Sheriff's Office, and I believe he's the president, Jim, of um.
Or he's the president now?
Isn't he? He's an officer, but I think he is, but so he, the person came recommended by him.
Oh, okay.
Just want to add who he is, because some people say they didn't know who he was.
Okay. All right. Moving on, city attorney updates.
So um, you have before you the um, um, draft license agreement for the um, Classic Wrestling Association. They want to have wrestling, wrestling events. If you recall, they came in a couple of meetings ago um, asking to have that done. Um, this is not um, something I, I want to have approved tonight. I want you to review it and think about it. Obviously, I don't know what the fee is going to be. Though we're going to have to figure out how we're going to come up with a fee for that. Um, but um, I also have additional information that I received from uh, the Tampa Sports Authority. Has um, obviously dealt with this quite a bit, and so um, their attorney has sent me some information that I, I requested. So I, I may uh, make some changes to this depending on what they send. And um, another issue I need you to resolve is um, they're planning on having their first event. Another issue I need you to resolve is they're planning on having their first event in end of January and. I, you know, you have one meeting in January, I think it's going to be difficult to push, press that, I don't want them going out and advertising thinking they're going to have a meeting and then you don't. We don't come to an agreement and then they've expended all this money on advertisement, so I, I just want to find out if the, the council would be. Okay with a, an event, it's in the January, if we can force this through, we might need a special meeting or something in January to get it done.
Okay, Mr. Anderson is not here tonight, right?
No.
Correct.
Okay. It would be my advice for them that they would try it later, obviously, just so they have more time to plan, obviously the more time that you're advertising, the better. They also are looking for donations and sponsorships, so the more time you have to do that, the better as well. But being that they're not here, it's impossible to know exactly if that's okay with their plans or what have you, so. I also would probably not be in favor of having a special meeting just for this topic, as it's going to expend a lot of city funds just for a nonprofit event that. City will not necessarily benefit from, so. If you're not okay with moving forward and their timeline that's presented, I would. Just say, deny it and tell them to try again later.
Can, can I add?
Sure.
And I have told them this two or three times that they're putting the cart in front of the horse. And especially, did we get their insurance?
I do, he, I should have it tomorrow, according to Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, and they, they did show us where they hired the deputies, but I told them that this had to be worked up and so. They kind of went ahead and picked this date, knowing it wasn't approved yet, we didn't know, wanted to be approved because Jerry's working on this. So I just want to add that they did know it, so.
Okay. Did they indicate what a backup plan would be if they were tonight?
No, I haven't heard one.
Okay. Well, I have a call with Mr. Cornet tomorrow, but that's going to be too late and we don't have another meeting scheduled till after the first year, so.
Well, I, I'll just move forward on the basis that, that they know that they're taking a risk and if it can't be done before. The, their, their event is just going to have to be canceled. And any expense, any expense that they, they put out is going to be their problem. But. And I can put my stuff together, but I don't know how to get a price for this, we'll have to figure that out and you'll have to set, set that price at a meeting. And a few of the other things, if you look through this and see, it's, it's, it's pretty intense, I'm. I've spent a lot of time on this agreement because the, the, there's a substantial opportunity for liability. And given it's your property and we're not supporting the event, but you know, this would, there would be a licensee for this, the, the space there. And because we already have people leasing the property. And the, the people leasing it are okay with it, but I, I suggested to them that they might want to have their attorney look at whether they want a indemnification too, since they're leasing the property. But that's not my responsibility.
Okay.
But if you look this over and see if you have any, any, any issues. It's, it's, most of it's not boilerplate, there is some boilerplate, the public records access and things like that are required by law.
Okay.
But. There's a lot to it.
All right, anything else to add or?
That's it.
Ask council? Seeing none, you're not looking for an actual motion, right?
No.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item number fourteen, city manager's report.
First up, so always fam, we had a Zoom meeting with fam and all the. People representing the city, Jerry on last Friday. Pretty much Lowell's giving them all their marching orders, what the, what they need to do. That we're looking at probably in March being done with it to send it all in a nice package up to the FAA. So it, it was a good meeting with fam on there, behaved themselves, so that was good, but it is moving forward. Debris, storm debris removal, I got a call from Bob Diefendorf with the county, he's the one overseeing it for the engineering part down or from the engineering office. He called me Friday. They're hoping they're out here, I think it's by December twentieth. But as far as the furniture and that, the county got together, was called Sebring and then called me and. Because of times gone by, there's so much furniture out there, had nothing to do with the storm. They can't figure out what's storm related and what isn't, so it's going to be tough to get FEMA reimbursement, so the county, Sebring and I agreed, we're just going to go around and we'll pick it up. It's the only way we're going to get rid of it. As far as all the residents who can't understand not to co-mingle all their vegetative stuff, we're going to go around and pick that up because. The county and, well, some county employees, but the ones that are working for the county contractor, they're riding every street. Once again, in Highlands County, incorporated, unincorporated, to see if there's piles of. Vegetative stuff out there and they'll have them pick it up if it is, but I told. Our supervisor this mor- or, yeah, this morning, or actually I got ahold on Friday, he was going to start this morning to go around, if we got little piles, it looks like, you know, the big clam trucks can't pick up, we're just going to pick it up, so. We see roads that have a bunch of it, we'll get ahold of county and have them send the contractors to pick it up, so that's where we are in that.
I think you'll make a lot of residents happy.
By doing that, I. And we'll all get less calls or emails, so.
Yeah, we got a lot of people that can't quite understand, you know, are we, are we picking up trash, are we not picking up trash and?
Yeah, I don't tell them I don't understand.
So, but how did they know, how did they know you shouldn't co-mingle it?
It, it got put out on the county's website, our website, their Facebook, our Facebook, I had Randy have the. Code enforcement go around knocking on doors and telling people, some people just don't care, they co-mingle, they just.
It was reported quite a bit on the radio as well and in the newspapers.
And then I've got about four more things I added on here. Frankie Grover came in front of you all and asked for, he's having an event over in the. It, it crossed the street down some park and asked for two thousand dollars, you gave it to him, well, I got the money back for the city. He got ahold of a five oh one C three and the lady first called the clerk and then, and, and talked to her about Frankie doing some things she wasn't comfortable with, I got on the phone with her. Thanked her for being very ethical person. But the, the check was made out to her, Frankie Grover wanted money from her, we actually have a letter from him to her asking for three hundred dollars of your two thousand. For gift tiff kits. Let me read it off, because it's pretty interesting. In the green one. Yeah, he said he wanted to disperse to them three hundred dollars for gift card giveaways, five hundred dollars for Kiss Radio for live remote broadcasting and commercials. That's not bicycles. And twelve hundred dollars for Philip Ham- Hamilton, who's the radio announcer. So he wasn't using it to buy bikes in this case, so anyways, I asked her to please return the money, she has returned it to the city, it's back in. Your accounts, I spoke to, and, and we have a lot of backup actually on paper here that. Of things Frankie, she said he cussed her out, got mad at her. And was asking money even for other different things.
Raven's here, sir.
Raven.
Ma'am, are you wanting to speak?
Okay.
Okay, if, if you want to speak, you'll have to come up to the microphone.
And if I can finish before Raven gets up here, I didn't realize she was here, but again, I appreciate.
You can come on up.
Upfront and honest, but I spoke to Frankie Grover this morning and told him. The money is back with the county. I mean, with the city, hopefully we didn't send it to the county, melody. And he, he had called back to the, the clerk and said, well, he's coming back to get his good reputation back in the next meeting, so I don't know if we'll see him or not, but thanks for being here.
Raven, if you will, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Raven, I am the CEO and founder of Dream Foundation Inc., which was the nonprofit that was going to. Partner with Mr. Grover.
Okay.
Our business address is two five two three US twenty seven South, Suite two zero three.
All right, what would you like to say?
Um, just to piggyback off what he said, to let you guys know, I did return the funds, I did reach out. To Ms. Hardeman to ask her, you know, what was the appropriate steps and just to inform her of what was going on, because. I just wasn't going to miss appropriate funds and what Mr. Grover was asking me to do was very unethical and. It had already been made very clear way before we came, before you guys in October, that no funds would be exchanged. We would be giving the city like original receipts, so you guys can make your own copies and things of that nature, but as soon as the funds were given to Dream, he just. Kind of wanted me to zell him the money to be verbatim, so.
Well, I'd just like to commend you for being an upstanding citizen and helping us out with this, with this issue. If you don't mind me asking, what does your organization do?
Um, so Dream was birthed from like my personal traumas of rape, domestic violence, gun violence, I'm not from Highlands County, I'm actually from Miami.
Okay.
So when I moved here and saw some of the same things, I just kind of figured, how can I? Help, because growing up down there, we didn't have a voice, there is no one to actually turn to or talk to. So since then, I've just been working a lot with the youth and also adults on how to redirect them and just kind of lead them. On a better path, so they don't kind of wreck out or just think that there's no one, there are no one they can relate to.
Well, again, I thank you and if you can think of any way that the city can work with you, or if you think of any events that you'd like to do, please come back and. Apply to us and we'll see how we can work together.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, so Frankie still, you still gave him basically permission to use the park, which he thinks he's going to move forward and get his own money, so. What do you want me to do on that?
I mean, if the city's not funding it and he does come up with money for it, do you see a reason, Jerry or Mark or anybody else, why we? Shouldn't approve it?
Well, I mean, there's nothing he's charged with and at this point. So, I mean, if you proved it, you can withdraw their approval if you, if you so wish.
Seeing, seeing he doesn't have a five oh one C three, though, he probably should at least be charged twenty-five dollars to use the pavilion.
He still would have to provide insurance as well.
Yes, which. Indemnification.
I have not received the certificate of liability as of yet.
Which he's now supposed to get to us tomorrow.
And he needs to sign an indemnification agreement as well.
Yeah, so I think, do we need a motion to simply say that if he doesn't get you everything that you need, you said by tomorrow was the deadline?
Well, he said he'd have it to us tomorrow, but he said he'd have it to us last week too.
Okay.
When is his event again?
The seventeenth, which is this Saturday, I believe.
Okay.
When is it, I got a question, when is the city? What? What date have the city given him for the deadline to have these items?
He's been told since September. Or whenever his approval, I have touched base with him every step of the way, hey, I need this, our paperwork says two weeks before an event, we're supposed to have this.
Okay. That would have been over a week ago.
Correct.
Okay.
So you have a basis by which to.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I wasn't aware of those, those details.
I will say, not that I'm defending anyone, but he did send us a certificate of insurance, but the coverage did not. Fit what was, we were trying to accomplish in terms of general liability and, you know. All these other things, so that may have slowed it down, he did in fact give me a certificate at the time, but it did not meet the coverage that we were requesting.
Okay, and it also did not meet the five oh one C three requirement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On that basis, I would, I would, do we need to move to deny the access to the park or what?
I mean, I think if, if he has met, met the requirements of the, the city with regard to the, the timing of getting insurance and indemnification covered and. Doesn't have the five oh one C three, although we can charge him something for the use of the park, whatever you charge anybody else for that, then. Yeah, I would say you could withdraw.
But at this point, I have a question, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Did you give him a timeframe, Christie, when you talked to him?
Two weeks before an event.
That was, that's what you told him.
I told him that.
Even after he gave you the wrong insurance. Did you like make him think he had some more time?
I stressed him out enough, I guarantee it.
Chrissy's very, very thorough, I promise you.
Well, you, you really need to stick by your own rules.
So I mean, at this point, if we do deny access, is it going to be? Adhered to, or is he going to just carry on with this?
At the end of the day, it is a, a public park, it's just that the city would not give him access to it, you know, with a, a certified event or anything, but if he wants to go to the park on any day he chooses, obviously he can do that.
Right.
But it would not be an official event or anything that the city supports.
It doesn't matter then, right? Whether we approve it or not.
That's what I'm saying, the, the point is kind of no, because.
Yeah, it's more or less just a, a punishment of not doing what he was supposed to do, that, that's what it is really.
Do well on that and give staff direction.
Right. So, I would make a motion that we deny our support for this event.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else on the city manager report?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot.
Uh-oh. Christmas is coming, you do realize?
Yeah. That's, that's one on here. The mayor knows this, but the mayor got me, oh gosh, maybe only a couple of months ago, maybe three at the most. Talking about maybe getting with Florida Department of Transportation on Main Street. And talking about going back to two lanes instead of four, the way it used to be, you know, nice downtown with the angle parking and that. And I don't know if it was God sent or all the blue, whatever, but I. Probably a month after we talked, because mayor was actually trying to find something from another city and I was looking also. On how they went about it, I got an email from FDOT and said, hey, we're looking to maybe put a, a. Bicycle path on Main Street, first I'm thinking, wow, I wouldn't ride a bike down there, but. For repurposing the lane and she said unless the city or, you know, you've come up, maybe you want to do something, and I said, yeah, can we have a Zoom meeting? And I got ahold of mayor, said, would you like to join me? And he did and the young lady from FDOT we were on was very nice. And the, the mayor passed on, you know, what he thought and I passed on a few things and. She got it to her boss and they sent out, emailed us both and wanted a, a letter of. Formal request, requests that they look at, so I'm just going to read off the letter to let you know what was in it. It was to Ms. Lake of FDOT and said, this letter acts as the city's statement of interest for formal requests for lane repurposing a state route sixty-four, the city's main street. Request is to eliminate one lane, both east and west bound, thus going from four lanes to two lanes. The eliminated lanes would become diagonal or angled on-street parking, replacing the current parallel parking, we believe that the lane repurposing would contribute to an economic development, livability. Vitality and the Avon Park Historic District while also creating calming traffic and enhancing traffic. So I got an email back. And said, thank you for your letter requesting the lane repurposing study, we are drafting a scope for the study. And we may be reaching back out in the next few weeks, introduce you to a consultant team and discuss the next steps for kicking off the study. So it's just a study right now, I mean, how much traffic is all that? But I know the mayor does, because he's got me, but I think it'd be a pretty cool thing if we can go back that way and get more parking downtown and, and slow some cars down and. You know, we talked about putting a little park there, people sit and that, so. Might get a hometown feel back if, if they're willing to move that way, so I wanted you all to know that.
Thank you.
Next one I don't like to bring up, but Rick Reed is on, Rick Reed is going to be leaving us.
Oh, no.
Rick is working on going to take a disability retirement. He told me I could say that, and if you want any more, he said you can talk to him, but. Rick has had some health problems and he's hung in there, I guess sometimes for me. But for the city and I can't thank the man enough, his last day will be January ninth, right David? Six, well, actually the ninth is the last day he gets paid, I believe, so on the Monday, so the ninth. But Rick's been a great guy, I can tell you that in my time here, walking in with not having positions. I don't know if I'd have made it out in public works without that guy, he's a. A get things done, I say it a different way, but he gets things done, so he's going to be. Greatly missed, but it's time Rick did it for his, his health, his family and it's just time that, you know, I tell him there's more important things than hanging in there for the city or me or anybody else, it's about him and his family.
Yeah, and if, if Rick's listening, I just want to know that I'm. Very appreciative of all the work that he's done for the city, I think he's gone to bat for the city a lot and got us through a lot of tough situations. He's furthered just about every program that he's worked on with the city, so it's been a huge asset and. It's not as if he's leaving willingly, the doctors are pretty much choking him and forcing him out, dragging him out, so. He's going to be sorely missed and, and hard to replace.
Thank you both of y'all, I appreciate it.
I agree too, thanks, Rick.
I've enjoyed working with him as well.
Yeah.
And he wanted to be on Zoom because he knew he'd get emotional tonight, so. And then, but then his right man, right-hand man Dave Wakelin, who is utility manager, he's decided to retire, so. You will be seeing advertisement going. you will be seeing advertisement going out for both of these. So I wanted you all to know before you saw it and said, they're advertising for this, what are they doing? Um, so, again, I, it, I hate to lose Rick, but Rick's doing the right thing and, and it's time. Like you said, the doctors have to drag him away. He's that, just kind of that kind of worker. Um, last thing I got, your December twenty-sixth council meeting, which is a holiday, if you want to make a motion to cancel that one.
Do we have a motion to cancel the December twenty-sixth meeting?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
That wa- that was heartfelt. Do we also have a heartfelt second there?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, is there anything else for the good of the city?
I have a question for, um, Mark before we end this year.
Okay.
You heard anything from the inmates for the city downtown?
Not unless you want to approve our, our, uh, city employees supervising now. But I can tell you the one, according to Rick, the ones that are out, if the treatment plans are doing great. I know one, one guy who was duly certified out there, he got out, so hopefully he got a job somewhere doing that, but the ones we have been using have been great, he said.
Okay, so we've been doing that program for what, six months now, something like that?
No, at least, more than that, probably.
At least, okay. Is that something that the council wants to look at at any point and see about expanding?
Nope.
No? Okay.
Absolutely not.
I'm, I'm seeing those, okay. All right, is there anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
Having said that, I don't want to see anyone until next year, so. Okay. Yeah, you'll have to give your name and address for the record there.
Okay, Arnold Wilson, fourteen twelve South Carolina Avenue.
You said it was quick now.
The third leg of the Parkway that's going to eventually get us out to, they told, I mean, to the, uh, Sebring International Speedway. Do you guys have a, a clue where that might possibly go to strike a road?
Isn't the third already done?
I lost, I got Rick was saying thank you to everybody.
My apologies.
The, the Parkway expansion, she asked when the third was going to be done.
I think the third phase has already been finished.
As far as I know, it's all done.
So, so finally the traffic that's going to be dumped. It's going to continue to be dumped, might be, there's no plan to maybe bringing out to strike a road down on Central Avenue.
Not that I've, not that I've heard of, no.
No, so the current Parkway, obviously in Avon Park terminates right there at the, uh, roundabout, uh, right on College Drive. That's, that is its designation. There is no other.
A memorial.
Planned expansion. That answer your question?
Not a good answer though.
I didn't say you'd like it, but that is the answer.
I say that because I definitely understand your tr- your child safety and additional traffic.
Sure.
You know, and.
Understood. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.